Thanks for your patience, folks. I'm going to go ahead and call this August 18th, 2025 meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order. Just experiencing some IT issues, so I apologize. Let the record reflect that Councillor Caltabiano is excused this evening, and we'll move on to our Pledge of Allegiance. And if Representative Bennett doesn't mind leading us, I would greatly appreciate it.
(inaudible)
Thank you very much. We'll move on to Item Three, which is Communications from the Public. We have 11 or 12 public hearings scheduled for this evening, mostly related to the adoption of our FY '26 budget, levies, special assessments. So if you're here to speak to those items, please wait till I call those hearings. Otherwise, anything you'd like to bring to the attention of the council, now would be your opportunity. Name and address for the record, please, at the podium.
Hello. No G-Man this evening? No?
He's absent.
Okay. I have a comment there. I'll just leave it in, and it'll be in the record. Okay. "It was the best of times; it was the worst of times." That's a quote from A Tale of Two Cities by Charles Dickens. One of the themes of this novel is the impact of social injustice. On Friday, August 8th, I participated in a ride-along with Sergeant Seth Stratten. Although I remained in the vehicle, I was able to observe and overhear much of his interactions with the public. He was respectful and engaging, a perfect example of community-oriented policing. Contrast my experience with Beckett's. Quote, "This is Hingis with the Whitefish Police Department, just out with a male that only speaks Spanish, wondering if you want to check him." To quote Rage Against the Machine, "Some of those that work forces are the same that burn crosses." At a council meeting shortly after the incident with Beckett, I respectfully requested you, council, to acknowledge the injustice and apologize to Beckett. Instead, you closed ranks. This is for G-Man. G-Man, you are correct that the keyboard warriors with whom you engage on the Whitefish Community Group Facebook page support the actions of Officer Hingis. Fortunately, this case, of which you are defendants now, named defendants along with Officer Hingis and Chief Kelch, City of Whitefish defendants in the complaint. Fortunately, this case, if it proceeds to trial, it might behoove you to settle, but that's beyond my expertise. It won't be decided by the loud voices on social media. And in the meantime... I take no pleasure in this, none at all. I really wish that it would be the universal experience of every person who comes in contact with a law enforcement officer, especially with Whitefish Police Department, that they have the same experience that Sergeant Stratten evidenced with those he came in contact with, rather than Officer Hingis. But it really shouldn't be just the luck of the draw or the bad luck. So, coming soon to a corner near you, just know, and it really does sadden me, that this is going to be edited, and the title of this piece is "Same Shit, Different Uniform." And I'm sad, because we're better than this. Thank you.
Further public comment this evening? Richard.
Richard Hildner, 104 Fifth Street, Whitefish. Number one, thank you for that recognition of Don Spivey, all of you. I thought that that was not only appropriate, but a well-deserved recognition of his contribution and his family's contribution to the betterment and welfare of our community. Number two, shout-out to Parks and Rec for the Riverside Park stonework on both sides, both ends of the bridge, but the piece that they just finished on the, technically, I think that's the west side of the river, but to me, it's the south side of the river, and that is stunning. It is a gorgeous piece. It's almost like sculpture over there. It's really, really fine. Number three, I thought the work session this evening was terribly productive, and I think those are some first steps that are really important in terms of our fire and our use of bike paths and those regulations. And fourth, I know I'm really disappointed in myself, but I'm not going to stick around for the budget discussions, and I do not wish to make further comment on all 17 of those issues that you're going to deal with. Thank you all for your work on the budget and city staff for the work on the budget. I know that, from experience, that's not easy. It's not fun, but it's absolutely necessary. Thanks.
Appreciate the comments, Richard. Further public comments this evening? Anyone online, Michelle?
For those of you attending virtually, if you'd like to speak towards anything that is not advertised as a public hearing, please unmute your mic. I think we're good.
Thank you, Michelle. I'll go ahead and close the communications from the public. Any volunteer board reports in the audience? Not seeing any. How about council? Any reports tonight? Not seeing any. We'll move on to our consent agenda. You do have the special and regular meeting minutes from August 4th. I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councillor Norton. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously, which brings us on to our multiple public hearings of the evening. We'll start with Ordinance 25-9, amending Title 12 of our subdivision regulations of the Whitefish City Code, and this will be on a first reading.
All right. Good evening.
Hi, Wendy.
Hello. So, we are implementing bills that were passed at the last legislative session for subdivision, and then next month, you'll see some zoning ones. So, first of all, subdivision. There were three bills that were passed that are related to subdivision: Senate Bill 553, House Bill 233, and House Bill 714. They address parkland and subdivision exemptions. Senate Bill 553 clarifies that a subdivider can make a combination when they do parkland dedication of both land and cash. House Bill 233 establishes a process by which a homeowners' association can petition the city council to have a parkland that got dedicated to the city to be transferred back to an HOA, and it also includes a definition of a homeowners' association, which we didn't have, for some reason, in our regulations. And then 714 offers some clarifying language for those using subdivision exemption. We also included a few typos where it still said Planning Board, and we changed those to Community Development Board. So, the language is straight out of the bills. We just plopped it right into the appropriate section. The Community Development Board held a public hearing in July. No one from the public spoke, and they unanimously recommended approval. Can I answer any questions? And we can go through them line by line if you'd like to, but...
Thanks, Wendy. Any questions for Wendy on her staff report? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing on what will be Ordinance 25-9, and we'll hold that public hearing now. Any public comment? Not seeing any. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for a motion. Andy.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve Ordinance Number 25-09, and that would be on a first reading.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll say it.
Seconded by Councillor Davis. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. That motion does carry unanimously, which brings us on to Resolution 25-16, amending the 2025 fiscal year annual budget to increase appropriation in two funds of the city. Leeny.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As shown in the staff memo, we have two budget amendments to the 2025 fiscal year budget to consider this evening. As required by law, budget amendments are required when spending has exceeded budget authority provided in the budget document for the corresponding fiscal year. In the amendments listed in Resolution 25-16, the expenditures exceeded the budgeted authority for expenditure in the Commercial Lighting Fund and the Solid Waste Fund, and formal action must be taken on the part of the legislative body to amend the budget authority to apply the available resources. In the Commercial Lighting Fund, resources in the form of available fund balance can meet requirements of the additional budget authority, and we are now requesting approval of the resolution to amend the budget of this fund. In the Solid Waste Fund, resources in the form of fund balance and future revenues can meet the requirements of the additional budget authority in the Solid Waste Fund. Staff respectfully requests approval of Resolution 25-16, requesting amendments to the fiscal year 25 budget.
Thank you, Leeny. Any questions for Leeny? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing on what would be Resolution 25-16. Any public comment this evening? Michelle, anyone online? Probably not. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for a motion. Councillor Fury.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve Resolution Number 25-16, which is a resolution amending the 2025 fiscal year annual budget.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Sweeney. Further discussion?
Just a quick comment. I think this is the least number of budget amendments we've probably ever had, and I think that's a testament to everyone, particularly, you know, Finance Department of Dana and all the department heads, too. So, that means the 2025 budget couldn't have really been any more perfect. So, anyway, there you go.
Thanks, Andy. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. We'll move on to Item 6C, which will be our FY '26 budget, which is Resolution 25-17, and we will hold one public hearing for the additional assessments, taxes, et cetera, which span Resolutions 25-18 through 25-28. Again, one public hearing, but I would request two separate hearings, one on the FY '26 budget, or excuse me, two motions, and the remaining on the special assessments, levies, and taxes. With that said, Dana.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, we've gone over the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget multiple times. We've held three work sessions this year, and so I'm very happy to present the final proposed budget for your consideration. As you know, during the 2025 Montana Legislative Session, there were big changes that came our way in the form of a property tax system change, as well as other bills that impacted some of our revenues. So, first, property taxes is often the most significant area of interest, so I'll just briefly go over that. Again, the tax rates have changed. Originally, it was 1.35% for residential property. There now is a tiered structure for the value of the home and the tax rate that's assigned for fiscal year '26. So, if the value for a value of under $400,000, the tax rate is 0.76%. And again, this is for if your home is $1 million, then the next $600,000 would be at a 1.1% tax rate. Then, if your home is $1.5 million, or we'll say $2 million, that next million is at a 2.2% tax rate. So, it's a graduated scale that is implemented for fiscal year '26, which is tax year 2025, not to confuse people. And then, for fiscal year '27, we will see more changes coming in the form of tax rate changes, as well as the implementation of the Homestead Act, where we have a primary resident tax rate and then non-resident tax rate, or second home tax rate. So, you'll also see there's changes to commercial tax rates as well. For the first $400,000 of market value, it will be reduced from 1.89% to 1.4%. And then, in fiscal year '27, again, you'll see that it'll be more than the first $400,000. That's actually going to expand to, I believe, six times the median value, around 2 point, I think it's about 2.25 million, or yes. So, anyways, we'll see. We'll deal with that next year. So, with these bills also came a need to look at our voted levies. We had two options. We have two options for our voted levy. We have one voted levy for the Fire Department. It's a 24-mil, fixed-mil levy. In other words, we levy the 24 mils, and as our taxable value changes, we just get the revenue that's generated from that. But this year, we had the opportunity to choose between keeping it as a fixed-mil levy or go to a dollar-based levy. Given the changes at the state level and known reductions for taxable values in the next year, we have, during our work session, council-directed staff to convert that to a dollar-based levy, and it has to be based on your fiscal year 2025 actually assessed amount. And so, we will have that levy stay flat between last year and this year at $1,944,370. For future years, because we're shifting to a dollar-based levy, we will now also be eligible for that amount to be adjusted by the full rate of inflation determined by the state up to 4%. This is an important decision and change to make, but I do believe moving to the dollar-based levy is the most beneficial for the city as a whole. It is also transparent to our voters as well, and in the future, any voted levies that we have have to be dollar-based, based on new legislation. So, that wasn't the only changes that we saw from the state legislative session. We also know that impact fees for certain public facilities will be eliminated. So, within this budget, starting October 1, impact fees for our parks, paved trails, and City Hall will be eliminated. And then, we will no longer collect the 5% administrative fee on those impact fees that are currently, or that will remain in effect. We won't be able to collect that 5%. Record request fees also, it's a small portion of our budget, but those were also adjusted to have a maximum amount that you could charge, so it won't recoup the full cost of staff time. But, so, minor impact to us there. So, overall, though, the important part is that our taxable value, as you know from our last work session, it increased actually 28.5%, which is not common, from what I'm hearing from other communities. Most of them saw a decrease, maybe it was 3%, maybe it was 10%. But we do have a lot of high-valued homes that are above that $1.5 million market value, where that tax rate changed from 1.35% to 2.2%. So, our mil value for fiscal year '26 is $104,157.00 and roughly 81 cents. With that in mind, we were able to adjust our mils to be able to fund our budget, and we were able to decrease mils, 3.07 mils. Small that portion of that decrease, 0.31 mils, was from our general levy. Our permissive medical levy, we dropped by 2 mils. The voted levy, obviously, because we have it set as a dollar amount, but when you turn it into mils for levying purposes, that actually reduced it from 24 mils and reduced it 5.332 mils. And then, resort tax from property tax relief, which is actually up for fiscal year '26, because the mil value went up so much, the number of mils that it's actually offsetting is lower, but we are giving back additional funds to the resort tax relief this year, which is great. In our budget, we do reduce anticipated investment earnings by about $175,000, just to be prepared for future years where we might not be earning as much interest, because we've had some really good years with high interest rates and investments, but that could change at the drop of a dime, as we've seen in prior years. So, with the property tax rate structure change, it's not as easy to show the impacts, because now we have to calculate the values with three different rates, potentially. In state law, we're required to show what $100,000 worth of value will pay. That's not really showing anything for our taxpayers here, especially with this three-tiered tax rate. And so, in my memo on Page 7 of the packet, our budget transmital letter, on Page 7 of the packet, you will see examples for properties with $100,000 market value, $800,000 market value, all the way up to $5.3 million a market value. And what you'll notice is that for those between $100,000 worth of market value up to $1.85 million worth of market value, with the mils that we'll be levying this year, they will see a property tax decrease, the most in that $1 million range, which will be about $250 less a year. For those in a $5.3 million home, however, will be paying more, about $912 a year. And what I've done, just through the analysis, is when you hit that $2 million mark, maybe a little bit more, that's when you start to see the shift of breaking even with your taxable value and our proposed property tax increase compared to, so that's when it starts to go up, when you start to see an increase in your taxes. And then, just depending on the value of your property, it depends how much more your taxes will go up. As a percentage, for that $5.3 million home, it's about a 20% tax increase, so it is big. But you're also seeing our more average, you know, workers, primary residents' homes that aren't on the lake, actually having a tax decrease that's fairly substantial. So, again, we had no control over that. That was the state legislature's change on just how the tax rates were applied to properties, but it is good for our local workforce and many of your residents that you know here as well. Resort tax, as I said, the relief from resort tax is going up about $175,000 this year. We'll be rebating $2.45 million, so almost $2.5 million is going back from our property tax relief. Our fund balance overall will be decreasing by the end of fiscal year '26 from 40.41% to 35.91%, and that's from the budgeted prior year to the budgeted this year. With that, though, most of that is related to capital improvements and funding those projects, including the Depot Park Townhomes contribution that we have yet to complete, providing those funds, about close to $1 million there. There is about $300,000 of spend down for operating costs, but again, if you remember, I said we were being a little conservative with the $175,000 in investment earnings that we are assuming we won't collect. I don't think this will be an issue for this year, and just given the tax increase we had to do this year, I think this will be able to be evened out in the next year. In fact, a lot of our homeowners who might be in that $5.5 million range that are primary residents will see a tax decrease next year because of the way the tax rates work. And so, I think next year would be an opportunity to look at addressing that. Overall, capital spending, you'll hear more about our capital improvement plan later on, but we are projecting to increase capital spending about $5 million. Most of that is due to the South Water Storage and Production Project, and then also our significant resort tax street projects. City employees will receive a pay increase of 4% that's comprised of a 2% cost of living adjustment and a 2% step. In addition to that, our three collective bargaining agreements, as well as the direction from city council at our last work session, we are adjusting wages to the market to be 95% of market. And so, with that, most employees are seeing a total of a 9% increase this year. The cost of health insurance, as you know, has gone up by about 14.5% for fiscal year '26 for the city. Of that, we pay about 8.5%, and the employees will pay the remaining 6%, and that's based on a formula that's been in effect for many years, since I've been here. But overall, I think this budget, as presented, is going to continue to support our efforts to provide services to the community as requested and as growth has demanded, retain our excellent staff, who are the ones boots on the ground, making sure that our community continues to operate as it does, and then we'll adjust to the growth and demand and improve our facilities as well. So, with that, I want to thank our staff, directors, for their assistance in preparing this year's budget, Finance Director as well. She's amazing. Leeny's just done a fantastic job this year. It's the first year that I was, I mean, I would tell you every year, it's just been like, oh, this is what it feels like to have a Finance Director. So, excellent work by Leeny. I couldn't have done it without her. She's worked a lot of hours to make sure we can meet the deadlines as needed. And then, thanks to you all for your thoughtful review, direction, and input during the work sessions we had. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks very much, Dana. Any questions for Dana on the FY '26 budget or the levies and special assessments? This, again, will be Resolutions 25-17 through 28. Rebecca.
Dana, would you mind just reminding the public that this city is only part of the tax bill? Because I feel like they're going to still be shocked that their tax bill might go up because of other entities that are taxing us.
Yes. Rebecca, you bring up a very good point. Our portion of the tax bill ranges between 20% to 25%, and so, the other portions, we have no control over. You'll have in there, you know, you have the Flathead Valley Community College, you have your school districts, you have the county, and then the state mils as well. And so, those are outside of our control, but of the 20% to 25% that our tax bill represents for those homes, as we described earlier, we'll see a decrease.
Thanks, Rebecca. Thanks, Dana. Further questions for Dana or Leeny? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing, and again, we're going to consolidate Resolutions 25-17 through 28 in one public comment period. Any public comments this evening? Michelle, anyone online?
For those of you attending virtually, if you'd like to speak towards this agenda item, please unmute your mic. We're good.
Thank you, Michelle. I will entertain a resolution or a motion to adopt Resolution 25-17, which is our FY '26 budget first.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve Resolution 25-17.
Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Councillor Norton. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. And then, next, we can batch up Resolutions 25-18 through 28, which are our levies and special assessments.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve Resolutions 25-18 through Resolution 25-28.
Thank you, Frank. Is there a second? Seconded by Councillor Norton. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. Thanks very much, Dana, and all the directors and staff, for that matter. Appreciate it. We'll move on to Item 7, which is Communications from our Parks and Rec Director, which is Item 7A, consideration to authorize the bidding of Armory Park restroom and playground paths. Maria.
Good evening. This evening, I am seeking your authorization for another part of Phase 4 of the Armory Park Master Plan. My staff report and supplemental documents are in your packet. As you know, the Parks and Recreation Department has been working with RPA on implementing portions of Phase 4 of the Armory Park Master Plan. In FY '25, we completed the installation of a small child playground, park amenities, drainage improvements around the Armory Building, a new WAG well, and a storage garage foundation. RPA is continuing to work on design engineering for our future steps to the Armory Park Master Plan, such as... Plan, such as the reconstruction of one softball field, the removal and associated drainage improvements of a second existing softball field, a picnic area, and then an additional south parking lot. But at this time, we are prepared to publicly bid for the construction of the playground paths and a new restroom. Assuming that we are authorized to proceed with the bidding, we will hold the bid opening on September 9th with a council award on September 15th, and then construction is planned to begin October 13th with hopeful substantial completion by June 30th. There are financial requirements to this. The current preliminary construction cost is $346,368.94. The FY '26 CIP has identified $792,000 of resort tax dollars for Armory Park Phase 4, so plenty in the fund to cover what we anticipate these two projects will cost. And staff has completed the review of these final designs. If you have any questions about them, I'm happy to answer them, but we do respectfully request authorization to proceed with bidding.
Thank you, Maria. Any questions for our Parks and Rec Director? Not seeing any. I would entertain a motion, please, to item 7A.
Move to authorize to bid the Armory Park restroom and playground paths.
Is there a second to the motion?
Also.
Seconded by Councilor Fury. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously, which brings us on to item 8A, consideration to award the contract for the land use chapter for Vision Whitefish 2045. Dave?
Yeah, good evening. So we put out a request for proposals back in June with the July 25 deadline. We had 12 proposals that were submitted to us. The ratings panel that you guys appointed, and we went through those, we narrowed it down to four finalists, which were CZB LLC Framework Design Workshop and Cushing Terrell. After that, we had a selection panel, which included Counselor Sweeney, and we interviewed all four of those. And one of those firms we unanimously selected, which was CZB LLC, their bid for the contract was $149,700, which is on the low end of the submittals that we had. And we recommend that the city manager be authorized to proceed with negotiating contract with that firm so that we can continue with our land use portion of our Vision Whitefish 2045.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions for Dave on his staff report?
I had one question, Dave. So the balance of the funds that we receive from HUD, which will go towards our CWPP and potentially a transit study, when do we envision getting underway with those RFPs?
So I'll defer to Director Cole over here on the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. I'm not sure when that's going to go out for public notices for the request for proposals. I think that, you know, we have a draft together of what the scope of work would look like. Once we kind of get an idea of what that's going to cost, then we'll know, you know, what budget we'll have for the last plan, which will be the transit study.
Okay. Thank you. Would certainly entertain a motion. Ben?
I would move to award the contract for land use chapter to Vision Whitefish 2045, excuse me, to CZB as proposed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Did you have a comment?
I just have a comment for everybody that I participated, and this group clearly came to the top of everybody we talked to. They were really good applicants, and there were several that were good. These guys were...these folks were really quite better, and I think they're prepared to be in person and get the job done in the timeline that we've got set up for them, which is very aggressive. And they were very enthusiastic about it. I think we're going to get some really good work out of them.
Thanks, Frank. Ben?
Yeah, the proposal looked great. I appreciate you guys interviewing and looking forward to get this done. I just wanted to make a quick comment that I feel like I read somewhere that there was an optional discussion with the city council at the end of this.
No, at the beginning.
At the beginning? Okay. Anyway, I think it would be helpful...what are you planning to talk at the end?
No, we're planning to...they're planning to do that.
At the end?
That's going to happen.
Okay. That'd be great. I'd love to talk to them at some point about it, so thank you.
Rebecca?
Yeah, just, I think when they're going to come to us, like the second meeting in December and to do their final, not their final, but sometimes we are not here then. But was there another option to meet earlier also?
You know, we met with them today, and we talked a little bit about that, that that's still up in the air, because sometimes you guys do cancel that second meeting. You know, we'll have to just figure that out as we move forward, what the best time for that is. And I do believe that we're having a work session scheduled for September 15th, where we will be giving you an update on the growth policy progress, and you'll be able to meet with that consultant, probably virtually on that day. But there will be...we're going to be doing a public visioning session on the 17th, which is a Wednesday, the normal Community Development Board work session evening, and that's where we're going to start our...kick off our visioning for the land use that night. So they'll be here in person for that.
I just...I talked to Dave earlier about them, and they really did a nice job with the presentation, and I've been to four of the cities that they presented, and they have amazing downtowns. But I'm just really relieved that the staff has helped to push this through because I was telling Dave, I think the land use planning is the most worrisome for our community. So I'm glad that you guys found someone that is excellent to work with.
Thanks, Rebecca. Further comments or questions for staff? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. Move on to item 9A, which will be to review and adopt our FY '26 through FY '30 CIP. Laney?
All right. Good evening again. The Capital Improvement Plan is a five-year plan that outlines the capital investment needed to continue to maintain existing levels of service and prepare for expanded service associated with community growth. Capital projects and purchases that cost in excess of $5,000 and will last more than one year is how the city defines a capital purchase or project. Department directors work with the city manager and finance staff to establish project priorities and details for inclusion in the Capital Improvement Plan and in conjunction with the availability of resources. In addition, the Public Works and Parks and Recreation Directors present resort tax applicable projects to the Resort Tax Monitoring Committee for their review and assistance with direction on prioritizing projects within the city. The Capital Improvement Plan typically spans a five-year period and is updated annually to reflect changing priorities or needs of the city. The five-year anticipated outlay for capital investment comes to $57,273,000 for 102 capital projects or purchases, with the greatest focus of resources relating to water system and wastewater improvements. Funding for capital improvement varies from cash reserves of applicable funds, fees and assessments, loans, revenue bonds, grants and donations, and/or state and federal program funding. The CIP document provides a five-year look by department of anticipated capital projects with a breakdown of funding sources, and then provides project detail information by department for those capital projects or purchases we anticipate purchasing, beginning or completing in fiscal year 26. The fiscal year 26 anticipated capital investment is $18,579,000, and the items listed in this portion of the CIP document are reflected in the fiscal year 26 budget document in the corresponding funds. And I am happy to answer any questions, but...
Thanks, Laney. Any questions for Laney on the CIP? Been through this fairly thoroughly. I would entertain a motion. Frank?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve, adopt the fiscal year 26, fiscal year 30 Capital Improvement Plan.
Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Counselor Cornell. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. We'll move on to communications from Dana, our city manager. You have Dana's report enclosed with the packet. Any questions for Dana? Dana, anything additional to report on?
I do want to just let you know and get your feedback, but Homeward, who is responsible for Alpenglow 1, not 2, I say 2 all the time now, but Alpenglow 1, the apartments that are there, 38-unit complex, has requested that the city apply on their behalf for CDBG funds to repair the and replace, really, the heat pumps that are in that facility. It turns out the heat pumps that were selected for the heating system are not adequate, given our weather here in the north. It is a fairly new project, so it's unfortunate to hear that. But what that means is we would schedule a public hearing for September 2nd, that's a Tuesday, because we have a holiday on that Monday, and September 15th with the application due September 17th. So unless I hear otherwise, I was planning to put that on the agenda. They would do the application, they would prepare all the documents, they will present at the public hearings, and then we would simply be a pass-through entity where we would sign a contract with them. The amount they're seeking is $250,000. Those grants do go up to 750, but they are not wanting to go beyond that $250,000. So if you have any concerns, let me know now, but I told them I would let them know tomorrow to confirm. But other than that, you also have in my manager's report the MDT Access Management Plan. You received a copy of that via email. If you do have comments, we do need to get those in by Friday.
Great. Thanks very much, Dana. Any questions for Dana on those additional items? Frank?
Dana, I'm going to ask a probably really impolitic question, and that is, how in God's name did we have the wrong heat pumps? Our weather has not changed.
Yeah.
Is it warmer?
I know. I don't know. That's going to be a question for Homeward when they're here on the 2nd for that public hearing. I'm unsure why they had the wrong heat pumps.
Rebecca?
They did build those buildings, though, right?
They did.
Isn't...there's no warranty at all or anything like that?
This isn't a warranty issue. I believe it's a knee...a performance issue that's outside of a warranty claim. Again, I don't know...the only information I got was that it had to do with the heating system and heat pumps specifically today.
That's good that there's grant money available, and we should get it fixed for sure, but oh, well, that's...there you go. Thanks.
Ben?
Yeah, this raises as many questions as it does answers. Sounds a lot like a construction defect to me, but it seems like it's going to be hard not to go along with this, but I would certainly like some more information at some point, and I hope we get the grant, because then it's going to be a question of what do we do if we don't get the grant? So anyway, love to learn more. Thanks.
Further comments on that subject? Thanks, Dana. We'll move on to counselor comments. Why don't we go ahead and start with Steve tonight?
Thanks, John. Just a quick question for Craig. What was the stuff that got sprayed on the roads over by Geddes and...
Yeah, so we did our annual seal coating.
Okay.
And so it's a...I mean, I can't give you the exact chemical breakdown of it, but it's an oil-based product that has a highly...how would I put this? Evaporative fume that comes off of it for about a day. And so we did ironically get more complaints this year about hydrocarbon odors than we have in years past. And I don't know if that's where you're going with that, but we do about...
I could smell it all the way down at my house.
15,000 gallons a year of it on different roads. So it's a penetrating oil that seals up roads, essentially.
Okay. And it's still...I mean, it's still off-gassing, because I was running on it today, and you can still smell it. I just don't recall seeing it that and experiencing it that intensely in the past.
It's the same product that we've used with the same company for about the last five years, but I will admit that we had more complaints about odors this year than we have in years past. And I don't know if that's just, you know, based on the weather when we put it down. It was dry and didn't rain for a couple days before and a couple days after, and so none of it, you know, went into the storm sewer or anything like that. But it did seem to be kind of a hotter batch, I will say, than in years past.
Okay. Thanks. I just wanted...I was just wondering, and I would love if we could figure out an alternative to that kind of application, because I don't think people around town really appreciate that outside their homes anywhere in town.
Yeah, I mean, the alternative is a standard chip seal, which is a much rougher ride, you know, for bikes, Peds, electric vehicles. And I mean, honestly, for the price that we pay on that product, it works really well. But I can give you guys a report on the actual breakdown of it, by all means.
Okay. Well, if you have time, I wouldn't...well, it would be up to the council if anybody else wants you to spend time doing that. It just shocked me, that's all. It was really, really bad, even two days still. And like I said, I can still smell it when I run over it. Okay, thanks. Other than that, I don't really have any comments, other than to say thank you all for bearing with me the last month. I had a lot of family in town, and I missed a couple meetings in a row, and, you know, I only get to spend so many days with my daughter in the summertime, and so I had two meetings I was with her. So anyway, I appreciate you bearing with me and all of the community for bearing with me for missing a couple meetings in a row. But I'm back, and as you know, school starts Monday, so yep. And I'm back to work soon. So thanks.
The new Steve. Frank, thanks, Steve.
Dana and staff, I'd just like to say thank you for all the work on the budget. I know it seems to go, at least from up here, I know, I see...we see all the work, because we see all the steps that go into it. The public doesn't come for this because it's pretty straightforward and we get it handled, but the amount of work that goes into getting it to that point is something that I think that should be more appreciated, and I, having sat up here for the number of years I have, I am amazed every year that we get this thing done, and it seems to be it's worked better and better and better each year. So thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you, Frank. Ben?
I don't have any comments, other than about that work session. Did you want to do that now or later?
I think we probably should address the fire regulations and give some guidance back to Cole and Dana.
Sure.
I think for the ordinance that Bridger drafted, I think that could probably be paused for now.
Okay.
Since we don't have to consider that until October, November.
Sure. Would you like my comments on that?
Yes, please.
All right, so wildfires are a big concern of mine. I think there's real reasons to be worried about that here. We do live in a world of trade-offs, and I think in my view, I'm still very concerned that as it's drafted, you're just going to get...you're going to get a lot of...you're going to get a lot more complaints about things that don't really have a substantial impact on fire risk, in my opinion, like the Comley Avenue example we used earlier. And I think you can skip a lot of the downsides of an ordinance like this by focusing more on higher-risk, larger acreage properties, which I think is really the meat of what this is drafted for anyways. So I don't have a ton of very specific recommendations, but I think in my thinking, it would make sense to maybe pare it back a bit to apply only to those larger acreages properties. And other thoughts on that? I think one of the allies you might find as it relates to enforcement might be HOAs. I think it could be considered to maybe have language in HOAs going forward that has to do with this. I mean, I think we have some control over that when we do subdivisions or and/or reach out to especially the higher-risk HOAs, neighborhoods in town, to see if they can assist in some of the enforcement, potentially, of something like this. And I would also say I think this is a step in the right direction, but I'm still worried that it's not enough for some of the high-risk areas. I mean, I could just see scenarios of Lion Mountain, Iron Horse, Big Mountain, just heavily wooded, steep, difficult terrain, just completely incinerating, which whereas I'm not saying never, but, you know, the odds of that happening in the center of town are much lower. you know, the odds of that happening in the center of town are much lower. And so I don't know the answers, but I do know that if there were additional steps to take in high-risk areas, I think that should be considered. But anyway, that's my feedback. Thank you.
Cole, how much of the concerns Ben raises may be addressed through the CWPP process? And would there then be opportunities to amend or otherwise bring forward new ordinances regarding urban wildfire mitigation?
Yeah, that's something that I hope that we will get from the CWPP is just some better direction for individualizing some of the areas that are target hazards, and at least get their recommendation for what we should do going forward.
Okay.
That's a good call.
Yeah. Anything else, Ben?
No, thank you.
Thanks. Rebecca?
Yeah, I guess I'm more conservative. I think we should be really proactive with fire prevention, and so I'm okay with adopting it as written. The only thing I thought about was some, what Steve was saying is there might be people that are unable to care for their properties or cannot afford it, or are disabled, and maybe we should carve out a hardship fund or a hardship mechanism for people. So if they, they are a fire risk to the rest of the community, that we have some way of not just penalizing them, but helping them to take out vegetation as needed, and they could maybe apply for a grant or something. I don't know if that's been discussed by anybody, but every time we talk about this, like, you just terrified me with that image of a huge fire up there. So I think it's good to be very proactive. I don't think it'll be overused by people in town, because most people in town are already compliant with this. But for the outliers, people that don't maintain their properties, I think it would be beneficial to have something like this. Right?
Thanks, Rebecca. Andy?
I guess I'll comment on that first. I kind of, I mean, I tend to err on the side of caution. I'd have to, so I'd have to throwback on that. And I guess rather than eliminating properties, what I would rather see us do is come up with some kind of mechanism to take care of those folks that would be harmed by it and would have a difficult time complying, be that due to income, be that due to mental health, be that due to age. I mean, I'd rather see us do that, because I think part of what we're trying to do here, and I just keep coming to that, when I read that story about the woman in Great Falls at Fourth of July, I'm like, you know, we're trying to get rid of things that are possible source for ignition. And I think any one single lot, if it's overgrown, a cigarette takes out half a town possibly. And it's not that it's, oh, it's a small lot, or it's, we don't want to have that spot where ignition can happen, and that's what we're trying to eliminate as much as anything, correct, Cole? Is that? And so when I look at it that way, I'm like, you know, it doesn't make a lot of sense. And I think when we heard the former fire chief, tonight Scott, saying, it's like, look, size doesn't really matter. And I mean, I have to kind of side with that. So I guess before we did that, I'd rather have us explore options for coming up with ways to mitigate negative impacts for people that it would impact negatively. I guess, I think that's a better solution. And I think Richard's right. I mean, if we're going to be, you know, if we're going to try and be a fire-safe and forward community, you got to start somewhere, and this is a pretty simple thing. And I kind of, I mean, as I drive around town and I look at things, I mean, I don't see that there's a ton of that happening on small lots. And yeah, there's always going to be the neighbor that's going to complain, but they're probably going to complain about weeds, too. So I mean, I guess, I don't know. So I guess I'd rather see us go that direction first, rather than eliminating properties. So, and other than that, just again, thanks to staff on budget. I know it's always hard, and, and I just hope that the public recognizes the fact that with great fiscal leadership from all of our staff and councils that have reseeded all of us, you know, we're in a position where people are paying less city tax on most houses than they did five years ago. And I don't think people understand that, and I don't think they understand how difficult that is to make that happen. And we're able to do that, and even though we did reduce our cash reserves this year, we're still maintaining a thirty-five percent cash reserves. In the event that we do have some kind of downturn, we don't have to go back to people right away for more money. And so I think that, you know, to everyone out there, thank you, thank you, thank you. It's, it's an amazing job, and it's always appreciated. And so, thanks.
Good comment, Andy. Thank you. I have just two items. Just a reminder, Dana mentioned our next meeting.
Sorry, John. Can I?
Go, go ahead.
I'd just like to weigh in on the wildfire.
Yeah, of course.
Or the fire thing. It seems like there's a middle ground to be stuck, struck at some way, in some way, to take care of the high-risk properties now, the bigger properties, with what Cole is asking us to adopt now. And then moving forward, we'll have a CWPP, hopefully adopted into the new growth plan by next spring, and then we can further fine-tune what we start now. I just, I agree with you, Andy. I think you, you're right. We should go about it the other way, rather than just eliminate some properties, go about it in terms of, let's figure out how to help the people that are going to struggle with this. I also think it's, it's important to, to take care of this, and I think that this is the first step, and what we really need to be doing is looking at the, the high-risk properties. And I drive, ride my bike through Iron Horse a lot, and, you know, they don't have, they're not fire-safe up there at all. I mean, they have trees right up next to the homes, and that piece of education and getting those people on board, that's, that's where the real risk is. I don't think it's in the tall grass in my backyard necessarily, although that does, that can be a risk, but it's not going to burn the town down. So I wonder if there's a way to kind of start small with the, with the big properties that are blighted or that are not taken care of at all, of a certain size, and then kind of bring that down to what we need to in the, you know, as we go through the CWPP process.
Frank, comment?
I'm just, I would echo what Andy had to say, and, and I appreciate what you're saying, Steve. I think we, I think this is a very small step, and I think that the number of concerns that we might have are very few compared to the potential risks that we run if we don't do something, and do something with respect to all of the properties within the city of Whitefish. I think I mentioned this to Cole earlier. I said, and I probably said it earlier, it's not okay for my neighbor to leave their property, for whatever reason, in a condition that's going to endanger my family or my home. Just not okay. We live in a community. We ought to take care of each other in that way. And I think the right answer is, is this applies to everybody. We'll figure out how to deal with the one-offs of the concerns of somebody unable to do it for whatever reason. We'll figure that out. And I'm willing to entertain something to that effect, but I think the first step needs to be, no, this applies to everyone and all property within the city. I don't think we ought to make exceptions.
Thanks, Frank. Any other comments on this topic? I just had two items. Just a reminder, Dana mentioned it earlier, but our next meeting will be September second. Happy Labor Day to everyone. And other than that, I just wanted to give a shout-out to Public Works, Craig. I mean, I've been driving town and just, you know, the, the improvements, the overlays, the striping diligence that Public Works has taken on this year, the seal coating, the Viaduct project. I mean, it all exceeds my expectations for this year, given the fact that we couldn't even find paint during COVID. So I appreciate it. Please extend that on to your department, if you don't mind. On that note, we are adjourned. Thank you.